Awesome. Did you do it? Did you do it? Did you do it? Awesome. Oh, that's a friend. That's awesome. Thank you. It's a little bit of a compliment. Thank you. Are you being nice? Are you being nice? No?
Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Burlington City Council on today, February 16. I would like to ask that everyone please silence your electronic devices. And for tonight's dedication, we call on Councilmember Jim Butler.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for another day when we can come together with one common goal, the goal to improve our city for the betterment of all. Father, provide us with the ability to respect the opinions of all that we may work together and resolve any differences that anyone may have. We ask that you bless the results of our recent planning retreat. Please bless the many individuals that provided time and knowledge to make that event a successful one and give us the dedication and knowledge to act on the initiatives that were identified throughout that day. Father, please bless this council, bestow to each and every one of us knowledge and wisdom from above to provide leadership for our city endeavors. In your name we pray. Amen.
At this time, we recognize City Clerk Renee Ward for the Code of Ethics.
The Council, it's our responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest and manage matters of course. Just as a very potential conflict, concerning some other issues.
Done.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 2, 2016?
Double. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This time, we move to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This time, we move to the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following traffic commission recommendations: To approve a 25 mile an hour speed limit on Fifth Street from Church Street to Davis Street. To approve the conversion of four two-hour parking spots to all-day parking on the east side of Morehead Street from a point 290 feet northwest of the intersection of Morehead Street and Lexington Avenue to a point 405 feet northwest of the same. To approve a 25 mile an hour speed limit on Main Street, Martin Street, from Graham-Hopedale Road to Bland Boulevard. To convert 21 rental spaces and three two-hour parking spaces in the municipal lot number five to employee-only spaces. To approve a stop sign on Elgin Court at Granger Trail. Item B, to appoint Randy Coons to the Relief Fund Board at the Burlington Fire Department. Item C, to award a contract to the amount of $576,660 to Terry's Plumbing and Utilities, Inc., for the Witsit Lift Station renovations and to approve budget amendment 2016-24 to cover the amount exceeding the $500,000 allocation in the current budget, as spelled out in your agenda. Item D, to approve a memorandum of agreement between the City of Burlington and Guilford County to utilize the Web EOC, a web access database for the emergency operations centers to be used during critical incidents. Item E, budget amendment 2016-23, Conference Carolina's Sporting Spring Sports Festival, as spelled out in your agenda.
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we move to public hearing. Item one on the public hearing, the City Council will consider an application to amend a conditional rezoning approval by the Burlington City Council on March 18, 2008. The request is to allow the use of an auto repair along with all uses allowed within the B2 General Business District with the exception of uses listed in the application. The property is located at 109 Trail 1, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 121438. This time, the council recognizes Planning and Zoning Director Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This item comes to you with the recommendation of staff and unanimous recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Commission found that the requested change would not adversely affect the adjoining property and would be in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan. The applicant wishes to alter the original use to allow for auto repair. He intends to erect an opaque fence around that property. If the property had not been rezoned in 2008, auto repair would have been allowed as a matter of right today. And Mr. Paul Coppelstone is here tonight to speak on this matter.
Hi, my name is Paul Coppelstone. I'm here to represent the property that I purchased in the neighborhood. When I purchased the property, my attorney had done a research on the property and he did not find any restrictions at all on the deed. So basically, the property has always been underlaged. It was built in 1940s, 50s, and it was Doyle's garage previously. My intention is just to use this auto repair garage again. It is aimed up for an exhaust as well, and that's the reason why I'm here, to change it back to the auto repair shop.
Excellent. Any questions from council?
The parking lot that's across the street doesn't have anything to do with your business, is that correct?
Just not.
Additional questions? Alright. This is a public hearing. So we'll begin with anyone who has anything to say or would like to speak on this side of the room. Is there anyone on this side of the room who'd like to speak? I don't believe we have anyone outside. Any further questions from council for Paul or Amy?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Public hearing is now closed. Any discussion regarding the rezoning?
Make a motion that we approve the rezoning request as recommended by staff as requested.
Second.
Motion as per forth is to approve the rezoning. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Zoning has been approved.
I move that statement of consistency, the City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changes in land use patterns in the area.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Thank you. This time, we move to item two. A public hearing has been scheduled for citizens to comment on area housing and neighborhood improvement needs and proposed activities for fiscal year 2016 to '17 community development program. This time, we recognize Shawna Tillery.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mayor, members of council. At the last meeting, you said tonight to be the public hearing for citizen comments on the community development programs. In October, we sent out a RFP to local nonprofits for funding through the CDBG program. We received the most requests we've received since I've been here. So I'll kind of give you a summary of those, and you'll hear from some of the agencies today. Ralph Scott Life Services requested funding for renovations to their day services facility at 1212 Turntown. They received that property from the county in November of 2014. At that time, it had some issues with the roof that needed to be replaced, and Ralph Scott has since replaced that roof, but it's also damaged ceiling tiles within that facility, so they've requested funding to replace all of those ceiling tiles and some other small renovations within that building. They currently serve about 87 people, and it's the only program like its kind in the county. And it's a very large building, it's 17,000 square feet. And we're looking at approximately around $50,000 for that project. Family of You Services has requesting funding for renovations to two of their existing bathrooms at their emergency shelter. They're currently not up to commercial standards and are in need of repair, and we're looking at around $30,000 to complete those repairs. Residential Treatment Services requested funding for painting the interior of the Hall Avenue facility. That's around $18,000 that is being requested for that project. Allied Churches has requested $30,000 to fund a coordinated assessment position, which we did last year, with partial funding for that, along with basic needs at the shelter. So that would be split between those two different categories. They also requested $10,000 to repair water damaged ceilings at the shelter. Burlington Development Corporations requested $25,209 as matching funds for their Hope and Step program, housing programs in the community. And the Alamance County Library has requested $10,000 of funding for North Park Library. Also included within probably budget proposals will be the continuation of the construction training program, which is a partnership between North Carolina Home Builders Association and the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. So when you opened the public hearing, I did have two quote responses that I wanted to include in that, were from two individuals that cannot be here tonight representing Burlington Housing Authority.
Yeah. I think you go ahead.
Veronica Revels, she was, I apologize that she cannot attend tonight, but she would like the city to consider allocation of some CDBG funding to an affordable housing indoor neighborhood revitalization initiative. Burlington Housing Authority is hoping to develop more affordable housing and would like to develop the property on the corner of Church and Ireland Street. This cannot happen without addressing the blight of duplexes across the street. To that end, the partnership with the city and a developer could move us towards a plan to revitalize that area all the way, at least to Fisher Street. CDBG funds could be used as gap financing. And then Nikki Ratliff, who's the Program Services Director for Burlington Development Corporation, apologized that she cannot be here tonight, but she would like to express the agency's need for continued support for a cash match assistance program for the supportive housing and rapid rehousing programs for the homeless. She understood that CDBG funding had not been, allocation had not been received yet, but despite that, she would like to consider as a recipient a portion of those funds to receive within those programs. To date, the city's assistance has housed 11 chronically homeless individuals and 15 homeless families, for a total of 66 people. And I did receive notification this afternoon that we did get our CDBG allowance, which was $402,011, which is a reduction of $17,939 from the previous year. And I would say that that would probably be due to the census change in the survey data that they use, the same thing happened last year.
Alright. Repeat those numbers.
Yes. $402,011. And then that's a reduction of $17,939 from 2015.
Any questions from council? Alright. Thank you, Shawna. This is a public hearing. If anyone at the side of the room would like to speak?
My name is Dorian. I'm with Ralph Scott Life Services.
If you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium. I know it's narrow aisles, but you can say your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Dorian Cole. I'm with 2542 Lee Drive in Burlington. I'm Operations Director for Ralph Scott Life Services. We support adults with developmental disabilities in Alamance and Castle County, and we would like your support through the funds to refurbish the building that we have acquired from the county.
Thank you. Cool. Anyone else on this side of the room?
Hello, I'm Ron Osborne, 412 Charlotte County, Burlington. I'm Director of Residential Treatment Services of Alamance, and we provide supplemental health and substance use treatment. Another Hall Avenue facility, which we acquired from the county last year, is in dire need of some painting, and we would like to request the city to consider monies to be able to paint the entire building on the inside. Since we have purchased the building, we've already done some landscaping to the facility. We're doing a brick campaign now, but we're putting in a brick patio for our detox crisis clients there, and need to be able to do some more stuff, so we're hoping to be able to do that. One of the things, just on another note, I would like to say that the community block grant funds have been instrumental in helping many nonprofits here in the county. The last 20 years, we have received several projects where we were able to put in a sprinkler system in our Hall Avenue facility, put roofs on a couple of facilities, put windows in facilities, be able to help, those kinds of things. And these monies are Godsend to the nonprofits here in the community.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm MJ Wilkinson. I'm the Director of Alamance County Public Libraries, and we've requested for $10,000 to be spent towards keeping resources at North Park Library. Last year, or this year, up through the month of November, we have had over 3,000 people visit our library, and we have circulated over 3,000 items there at North Park. We're working hard to revitalize that area and have group programs that are pertinent to the community and can draw the community out. And in fact, this year alone, up through November, we've had 40 programs there that 471 people have attended. So we're really working hard to make that a vital part of that community and to get that an active library.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Chip Paylor with the North Carolina Construction Training Partnership. As Ms. Tillery mentioned, it's a tri-party between the City of Burlington, the NC Housing Finance Agency, and the home builders. Couple of goals off the top are to try to impact affordable housing in the area and also train people of limited means and construction trade skills, build their confidence. We, the partner in Raleigh, the NC Housing Finance Agency, matches what the city puts in dollar for dollar, and we appreciate your support in the past, and thank you for your consideration in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Moving back to this side, is anyone?
I am Kim Crawford, Director of Allied Churches. The CDBG funds affects lives. It houses people. At Allied Churches, in the last two months, we've housed 21 people. Our facility is the point of contact for our homeless population in all of Alamance County. Because of the help that we've gotten from the City of Burlington, we've been able to rehab that building. The building that we have, when people drive by on Fisher and Trade, they look at that facility and they can say, wow, that's our homeless shelter. And you know what the best part about that is, is that when we look at that, we can look at that facility with pride and say, you know what? That's how we treat our low and low-income neighbors. And we can all say that with pride. And I've been here three years, and I've appreciated the support, and I know my staff has, and they're all here. If they'd stand up, that'd be awesome. Because what the City of Burlington has done for Allied Churches is change who we are and what we look like, and what we do for this community. We've been primarily focusing on the facility itself, but we have moved with the help of the city into working on the coordinated assessment, which is the single point of contact for Alamance County, for our population and those that are most vulnerable to have to call one place. They don't have to go to six, seven, eight, nine different places to try and find safe housing. They call one place, and Allied Churches is the place where that starts. And then we work with all of the wonderful partners, most of them have also been listed and requesting funds from you to work with us to house those that need the help. So we are incredibly grateful, and we are also very grateful for your time, that you are focusing on the comprehensive plan. Right now, we average 72 days stay in the shelter. When you stay in the shelter that long, a whole lot of the other problems come along. But we do know that you're focusing on affordable quality, affordable housing in Alamance County, and we are incredibly grateful for your attention on that, because we know that with your help, we will change the way homelessness looks in Alamance County in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Kim Smith, and I work with Family of You Services. I'm the Shelter Director to Our Sister's House. And we have been undergoing renovation projects in our kitchen and our family area. And the next order of priority for us has been our two bathrooms. And one thing to just kind of say, part of the reason why I have pictures here is because we are a confidential location, so people can't invite and see us and what's happening. But very much with Kim, the whole idea of lifting up the people who have, who need lifting up is very important. For me, the folks that come into my doors, I want the surroundings to remind them that I brush this. Because so often, in domestic violence, they've been told to so well that they're not. And so this is a picture currently, actually a couple of weeks ago, of the current renovation projects, we were in flux with that, but we feel good in the next. The bathrooms, we have a downstairs bathroom and an upstairs bathroom. This is the upstairs bathroom that, we have three bathrooms. One is in a room, in a room, but these are the two public bathrooms, I should say. This is upstairs, it's shared by three families, and if you look at the needs there, you have an old sink that has the hot water on one side and the cold water on the other side, and nowhere to put your toothpaste or your hairbrush, and you have kids, which a lot of our kids are in that area, use that bathroom, and where those things fall down the sink, those things easily fall down the sink, causing all kinds of issues with plumbing. You also have noticed that that doesn't have a shower. That bathroom is without a shower, and that's one of the most used bathrooms. It just has the old tub. And so that's the one bathroom. If you'll go to the next. This is our downstairs bathroom, which is the bathroom that currently actually has our washroom in it right now while the others are being renovated, and it's our only shower that's shared with the clients. And so if you're looking at that, you're thinking, everybody in the house, and we can have anywhere between, at full being, at full capacity, we can have anywhere between 16 to 22 people, depending on how many kids people bring, sharing the one shower. So obviously, there's a need there, and we would very much appreciate your support.
Thank you.
I'm Lynn Russo. I'm the Executive Director of Family of You Services. I just wanted to thank you guys so much for your past support. This funding means the world to us. You could see how victims who are feeling very vulnerable and lost would feel very unvalued going into an environment that is really was just run down to a point where it was almost embarrassing bringing clients in. So we're very, very supportive of the community. We're very grateful for your funding. I also just wanted to say something about us supporting our community partners as well. One of the really cool things about working in Alamance County is how well everyone really does work together. We really do like each other, we all sit together, we have meetings, we talk about, okay, this is what's going on right now, our family shelter situation isn't great, we need more assistance, we need to figure out a way to better serve our community, and it's just been such a great experience, and I'm just, I want to give my support to Kim and Ryan and other agencies that are asking for funding as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on this side? A motion to close the public hearing?
A move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Public hearing has been closed. Thank you, everyone. At this time, we move to new business, item three. City Council will consider a request to temporarily close the following streets during the Alamance Region 45th Annual Antique Car Club Show on Saturday, May 21, 2016, from 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., the conditional upon, conditional upon meeting requirements of the City of Burlington's Special Event Permit Application. At this time, we recognize Mr. Rick Holmes.
Hello, we'd just like to thank you guys for hosting us for the past bunch of years. We've been in Alamance County for 51 years now, and hope to continue having our car show downtown. So is there any questions from anybody?
Alright.
That's all we got.
How many cars you folks brought down last year?
Last year, we had 122, I believe it was.
Any idea how well attendance?
We normally have about 240 members of the Antique Car Club from all over North Carolina, and we usually have about the same number of participants from the general public coming through.
Excellent. Any questions from council?
Paperwork looked like it was in order, so.
Guys have done this a couple times, so.
It's our 45th show.
Alright.
Move that we approve the closings.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the street closings, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This time is normally our public comment period. We've had no public comment signups. So we move to city council comments.
I would like to say a couple words real quick. I'd like to thank all our city staff and everyone that participated in the retreat. I know it was a lot of data that was put together and a lot of research and background went into that, and then a lot of information was compressed in a short period of time. So I think we took the six or eight toughest topics out of 130 or so and said, alright, we're gonna work on these first. But the efforts to provide that information is critical to launching that project forward, and I want to say how much I appreciate everybody doing that. Hard and great job.
Thank you.
And again, our street departments, you have to give those guys credit. They did one job, getting the streets clean for us. And it's the seventh time in a row here that you had to, they got the big guns, they salt the roads and everything, and thank you guys, and I'll be by there to thank them personally. So just pass that along for them.
Upcoming events, we've got a bulk waste collection event going on from February 29 through April 29. That's free yard waste, junk removal, and white goods and appliances. So folks can find out more information on the city website about that. Also like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Frank Hope. This is Frank's last city council meeting with us as interim city manager. So we appreciate Frank taking that time to spend with the city and to help get Harden on board.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Based on that, I've just gotta say something. We'll take a minute, I know you guys have other business to do, but. I've grown up in Burlington, lived here my whole life. Family ties to the City of Burlington. My dad worked here. Burlington's a special place. Harden, I'm telling you, is a special place. You are in a great situation, you have a great team to work with, you have great council to work with. I've been through the good and the bad in my life personally, a lot of you know that, I lost a son. What helped me get through it? What helped me get through it was my friends, who are my family with the City of Burlington. I can look at many of these people right here in this room, they were my home that day and during that time. Can't tell you how much I appreciate it. I appreciated the opportunity to serve as the interim manager. I hope my dad was looking down and saw that and was proud of it. He was one of those guys that didn't say what he thought too much about being proud of you, but I hope he, I hope he was. Yes, it was, it was a highlight of my career. Mr. Ward remembers my dad well. They, they've worked here a long time and he was quite a character, but he was really well-loved. And I think he led me to this type of work. And it's a, again, the people are wonderful. I can't tell you, I can't even start naming names of the people. I want to thank Buddy Baker and Gary Hicks. They were instrumental in getting hired to start with. And many of you don't know Mike Birch, he worked in the city garage and he was very instrumental in that as well. But to everyone, I say thank you. I wish you well. And I'll be watching and if I could help in any way, I'll be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 for the purpose of consulting with our city attorney regarding the claim potential litigation involved in the city.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Council will go into closed session and will return when that is complete.